Good evening. I'd like to call the December 8, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. At this time, may I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Vice Chair, if I could have a point of privilege, I would like to ask that the Board make a motion before going into Executive Session to strike the student discipline matter from the Executive Session items. Administration would like to gather more information and bring that back to the Board at a later date in time.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? We'll take the vote. We'll do a hand vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Manning votes in the affirmative. Motion passes. Correct, Zee? Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, may I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Vice Chair, I move to convene Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the District Adult Education Program and breach of contracts.
Second.
The motion has been brought forward by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker and seconded by Amelia Mackey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, hand vote, please.
I vote yes.
Mr. Manning votes in affirmative, Zee. Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I voted yes with my hand, and that's the correct vote. It came out, I accidentally hit the no, but it is a yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Okay, at this time, we will move into Executive Session. Good evening. We'd like to call the order to order the 12-8-2020 School Board Meeting. At this time, I would need a motion to come out of Executive Session. Ms. Mackey.
I'd like to record, I move that the record reflect that we ended Executive Session at 5:41 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Do we have a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. And we have a call-in. Hold on just a moment. Mr. Manning? Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are we ready for, okay, it's already up there. Thank you, Zee. Okay, please submit your vote. Motion carries. At this time, we will move to... I'm sorry, we will move to 3.1, the Inspirational Moment and the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Just a couple of sentiments to leave us with tonight. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe return from their Thanksgiving holiday. Glad that we've got everybody back from their probably modified celebrations. And just a couple of sentiments to share with people. One is by Barbara Corlos. "If kids come to us from healthy, strong, functioning families, it makes our job easier. If they do not come from a strong, healthy, functioning families, it makes our job more important." A Chinese proverb that we've heard often, "If you are working, if you're planning, if you're planning for a year, sow rice. If you are planning for a decade, plant trees. If you're planning for a lifetime, educate people." And finally, something to think of by Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King, "Be a bush if you can't be a tree. If you can't be a highway, just be a trail. If you can't be a sun, be a star. For it isn't by size that you win or fail. Be the very best of whatever you are." And just taking a time to thank everyone for the part they play in educating our students in Richland 2 and staff and administration, and I appreciate that. Thank you. If you would please stand at this time and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we need a motion for the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the December 8, 2020 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 School Board of Trustees.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Ms. Maffad. Motion passes. Six to, six yes, one no. We needed the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the December 8, 2020 Regular Board Meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Motion passes with one abstained. Next, we will have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Madam Chair, that was part of the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. You can tell we're not really used to doing this. Okay, we'll move on. All right, thank you. 5.3, employment, no, public participation, 6.1. Let's jump back to 5.3. Which one are we on?
6.1.
6.1. Okay, public participation. At this time, before we do public participation, let me say a few brief words. I will be holding everyone to the three-minute time limit. I heard that some people thought I was a little harsh the way I ended it before, but I believe that we do need to end after three minutes. So what I will do, when you're getting close to your three minutes, I will give you a little nod or some kind of gesture to let you know. But we will be ending after three minutes. Remember that in public participations, we do not call for specific names, schools, or teachers, or board members. At this time, our first public participation will be Gus Filpot.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Davis, my name is Gus Filpot. In many places in the United States, professional and college and high school sports players are taking a knee when the National Anthem is played. In order to prevent such gross disrespect of the United States' flag in the Richland 2 School District, I request the Board to formulate a policy that clarifies respect for the U.S. flag. This policy should provide that at any school function, no player will take a knee or in any other way show any sign of disrespect, including not taking the field before the National Anthem is played. I heard a rumor recently that a Blythewood High School football team stayed off the field until the National Anthem was played. I attempted to learn whether there was any truth to the rumor, but, name omitted, has not replied to my October 26 email yet. The Board and Coach, name omitted, received a copy of my email to the position. As a concerned member of the community, I offer to participate in the drafting of a policy that addresses this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Filpot. Next, we have Lisa Ellis.
Good evening. I'm speaking, reading this letter from Chris Haas since he could not be here tonight due to being quarantined after an exposure in his classroom. Dear Dr. Davis, members of the Richland 2 Executive Team and the Richland 2 School Board, last week, I, like many others, was placed in a 10-day quarantine after being exposed at close distance to someone who tested positive for COVID-19. As someone who has lost both an uncle and a cousin to this virus within the last month, I am beside myself that my family, including my 73-year-old mother who lives with us, has been and continues to be placed in harm's way. Immediately after my removal from our school campus, I received an email crafted by the District Office. The letter began verbatim, "Dear employee, during your quarantine period, Richland 2 will allow you to work remotely." This language confused me, particularly since it isn't my fault I am now in lockdown. Rather than saying I will be allowed, I would hope the letter might read, "We are grateful for your willingness to continue teaching remotely despite the inconvenience we know this quarantine must create for your family, because it really does. If we are to mend this community as everyone hopes we can, more care needs to be put into our messaging. Beyond the specifics of my own situation, one major concern I have is the fact we are leveraging people's help for the convenience of tax-funded childcare. Whether kids learn in the classroom or at home right now makes little academic difference because dual-modality teaching isn't really much of an upgrade, if any at all. We are still teaching from our computers. We are still having many of the very same technology issues. We are still not supposed to be anywhere near the kids who need the most help reading and writing. In light of this, I find it interesting those within our community who demanded we reopen schools to improve what they called, quote, 'fail virtual instruction,' end quote, are now absolutely silent even though little of the instructional delivery has changed. It speaks volumes about their actual motives when attacking this district. One thing I know is that if we are going to continue down this dangerous path, we need better solutions. The problem is, since we were already in the midst of a severe teacher and substitute shortage, the struggles we face are likely insurmountable because we lack the adequate staffing. For instance, I have far more kids in my classroom than I can safely socially distance. Each day, my kids take their masks off for 30 minutes to eat while sitting three feet away-
Lisa Ellis, you're on 29 seconds.
...while sitting three feet away from one another, sometimes less because tables can't be separated any further than they already are. It's no shock so many of us wound up at risk. We love this district, and we are proud to work alongside every single one of you here tonight, but we need to find a better path forward, one that moves us from "Dear employee, you will be allowed to work remotely during your quarantine," to actions that put our safety first and foremost.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. We appreciate it. At this time, we move to 7.1, Student Admission Requests Into the District Adult Education Program. Do I have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair? It's me.
Oh, Ms. Mackey.
Sorry, my feedback. I move to approve the student admission requests into the District's Adult Education Program for Students 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Do we have a second? Second. That was Ms. Agostini? Agostini. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move into 7.2, Breach of Contracts. Do I have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I move to direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding four professional employees who breached their employment contracts with the district.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Motion carries unanimously. New Business 8.1, the Superintendent's Highlights. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, and to the members of our Board, to our viewing public, and to those of our public that are here with us this evening, good evening to all of you. I am transitioning to providing superintendent highlights as opposed to having superintendent comments at the very end. Wanted to take advantage of having the attention of those individuals who are watching remotely and those who are attending to hopefully shed some continued positive light on this wonderful school district and the things that make our school district premier. So by starting out, I wanted to start off by, in the highlights of addressing an issue of safety, I want to start tonight by addressing reports, of course, that we had in the news story on overcrowding of our classrooms and ignoring CDC and SCD HEAD guidelines. In Phase 2, our average class sizes at the elementary right now range between 6 to 18 students. Our middle schools are ranging between 4 to 7 students, and our high schools are ranging between 3 to 5 students. Now, we know that there are some outliers when you have, of course, averages. You will have highs and lows, but these are the averages, especially as it relates to our elementary schools where more students have returned to in-person instruction five days a week. Before we went into Phase 2, the district worked with an architect firm to develop suggested classroom configurations for keeping students and teachers six feet apart based on the designed number of students in that classroom. Our maintenance, logistics, and operations teams have worked with schools to remove furniture from classrooms to optimize space. Some classes moved to larger spaces. Other classes switched from using tables for students to using individual desks. Plexiglass and other barriers were added to desks and tables in classes where the number of students returning made it difficult to maintain that six feet of distance or space. Our guidance to schools has stressed doing all of what we can to maintain six feet of social distancing. Our employees and students are doing a great job, and I want to emphasize that our employees and our students are doing a phenomenal job at wearing their mask. Yes, there are times when masks have to be removed, and during those times, it is critical that our students and our employees stay behind their dividers or six feet apart. We know that no matter how much work we did prior to the November the 4th, November the 4th, we must continue to stay focused on safety. Employees, we need your help in doing this. Teachers, if you are having difficulty maintaining social distancing in your classrooms, please, please let your administration know first. Please let your administration know first what your challenges are. They know that our district departments stand ready to provide whatever assistance that we can. In regards to the CDC and DHEC guidelines, we are following those guidelines. I want to make that clear that the district, we are following those guidelines. Our school nurses, led by our health coordinator, Don McAdams, are working, are doing a phenomenal job of reinforcing the safety precautions outlined in state and federal guidance, all while working day and night and weekends and notifying those close contacts. Their quick, thorough, and cautious actions when identifying close contacts is working. As of today, no one that the district has identified as a close contact has tested positive as a result of exposure to the positive cases in their class or groups. We have to remain steadfast in our commitment to working together. That's how we improve in our areas of need and maintain and build on what we are doing well. As we navigate the challenges and circumstances caused by this pandemic, we also need to take time to talk about those things that are going well, those things that we are doing a great job at. That helps us continue to find the motivation to push forward and to remain steadfast in our commitment to providing a premier educational experience for all of our students. So now that I've said that, I want to share part of an email from one of our high school teachers to her principal. "Fridays are saving my life right now. Friday intervention, collaborations, and planning, grading time have helped me get through some really hard weeks. Everything is taking longer right now, and that additional time has been necessary for serving students effectively. Late start, I would have to believe that starting just 25 minutes late each day would help. Again, I think that is another place where we have established some much-needed margins. I also love that buses have all been able to get to campus on time so that I can start classes on time. And for those of us who know, when we were normally, we would hear complaints about buses being late all the time and had to address those issues, but we have not had those issues, knock on wood thus far. Google Enterprise, having the additional meat features and data has helped with the conversations with parents whose kids may not only be logging in for short periods of time, I have twice been able to gently show a pattern of behavior so that we can make a plan to correct that. Adding learning days before Thanksgiving and winter breaks. We would have had so many students out on these days anyway, and I appreciate the time to teach from home or an unpopulated campus to limit the contact before break. And finally, our custodial staff and our school nurses have just been great. Our nurses have been so quick to respond to requests and to email when students are quarantined with crystal-clear descriptions of the level of contact and return dates. I have so appreciated her communication, which I know takes a ton of time. So I just want to thank those individuals, those teachers, those, all of our employees, our students, our parents, our board, our community, for doing an exceptional job. There are so many positive things that we are doing in our school district as we work together to address this pandemic, and I don't think that that can be lost, as though we are oftentimes in this field of public education berated with an amount of negative information regarding school. And that negativity started long before COVID. It's not new. As I've shared before, all COVID did was expose those things that were already there. So we already had this negative connotation around public education in this state and in this country, and so it's easy for us to fall toward the negative and run away from all the positive things and recognize that we're doing, but we're doing a better job in our district and focusing on the positives. We're calling it and focusing on what we call, or what's being called, appreciative inquiry. And sharing that, there's more information that you need to know. There's a lot of information out there about COVID testing in schools that is important for our families and our parents to know as well as our educators, and we want to clear up some information or share some information with you all about testing in our schools when it comes to COVID-19. Richland 2 continues to assess the district's ability to do rapid testing provided by public school, provided to the public school districts by the State Department of Health and Environmental Control. A substantial amount of infrastructure and logistics must be in place for this to happen, though. This includes applying for and receiving clinical laboratory improvement amendment waivers, developing and implementing processes for staffing, test shortage, storage, quality control, and documentations required for the waiver to ensure proper infection waste disposal processes are in place and complying with state and federal regulations, and that's a responsibility of the school district. Training nurses in the use of the test kits, establishing and maintaining data and documentation, obtaining consent to be tested from parents and guardians, developing and implementing operational infectious control plans for test administration. Since the release, so those are many of the things that we have to do, but we are working on a plan that we, working through a plan on how we're going to do that, what it's looking like right now. But as soon as we have more information about how we're going to do our testing in this, in our district, we will, or we plan to offer that rapid testing in Richland 2. I know there have been some articles in the paper about other school districts that may have decided not to do that, but we are looking at our options of how we can provide that rapid testing for our students and for our faculty and staff and all of our employees in our district. Some good news about graduation rates. Since the release of the South Carolina, South Carolina School Report Card on October the 30th, if you remember, Richland 2's graduation rate, which was reported on the report cards, has changed. The district rate has increased from the originally reported rate of 87.3 to 88.8. After the graduation rates for our high schools were shared with us by the State Department of Education, school and district administrations realized that a mistake with the calculation of Blythewood High School. We were able to correct that mistake, which increased Blythewood High School's graduation rate from the previously recorded or shared 87.5 to a rate of 93.5, 87.5 to a rate of 93.9. So, Richland 2's graduation rate is above the state's average, which is at 82.2%. The rate for African-American students, graduation rate for African-American students in our district is 88%, while the rate for the state is 77.5. 82% of our economically disadvantaged students in the district are graduating compared to 76.2% in the state, and 69.6% of our homeless student population have earned their diploma, and this is also above the state average. In addition to that, the district's dropout recovery rate is now 20.4%. This is up from 7.8%. So recovering those students and getting them to the point of drop, to graduation has been definitely a mission of ours, and we've actually convened a graduation task force to continue to see how can we push beyond 90, a total of 90% and sustain that. When it comes to bonuses and incentives, there's a lot of news about bonuses, and I believe we even had, I think, one of our board members mentioned that we should be considering a bonus, and we shared that we would be considering a bonus. So, something else being reported, as we discussed in our budget workshop back in October, it is our recommendation to wait until we have closed out our fiscal year and completed the audit for 1920 before we make any decisions on bonuses for employees. The State Department of Education has moved the deadline for the submission of district audits from December 1, 2020 to January 15, 2021. We also hope to have more information by that time on what the legislation may be doing regarding the 2021 budget, but administration is looking, and we, remember, we did our bonus earlier this calendar year, I believe it was in February, and so we're looking at that same type of timeframe for our employees. On a related note, the district administration is looking into offering temporary pay rate increases starting sometime after the new year for the remainder of the 2021 school year for substitute teachers and bus drivers. Since March, the term essential employee has been a common refrain, keeping our schools open during the pandemic depending on a lot, depends on a lot of those groups of essential employees, our bus drivers and our substitutes, especially when bus drivers and teachers have to be quarantined. And I have several awards that I would like to share with you all as part of our highlights and in practicing this appreciative inquiry for our school district and demonstrating all the wonderful things that we are doing to be premier. In 2021, the South Carolina, for 2021, the South Carolina Adult Education Director of the Year is Mr. Bobby Cunningham, if you haven't seen that on Twitter and social media. Mr. Cunningham is the principal at WR Rogers Center for Adult and Technology and Continued Education, and he has worn many hats since joining the Richland 2 family back in 1979, including Assistant Principal, mathematics teacher, an athletic director, and basketball and golf coach. I did not know Bobby was a golf coach. The South Carolina Association of School Administrators recently presented the award to him during the Virtual Adult Fair Fall Institute, so if you see Mr. Cunningham, please tell him congratulations. On that note, on another state award, the South Carolina Association of School Administrators has also named Brandon Ross, the 2020 South Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year. Mr. Ross is the Assistant Principal at Ridgeview High School and is one of our emerging leaders who puts his heart and soul into every aspect of his work. Dr. Tia Jones, Assistant Principal at Catawba Trail Elementary, is still in the running for the 2021 Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year. And Dr. Twanisha Gardner, currently the principal at Lannabeen Nelson Elementary School, won the award last year while as an Assistant Principal at Langford Road. And if you remember, Ms. Latisha Cook also won the Middle School Assistant Principal of the Year honor the year prior to that while at Muller Road Middle School. So that's three in a row. So that's three in a row, and we're counting, three in a row, something to be very proud of our school district and our administrators. The sun seems to be shining on Ridgeview as the coaches from around the state endorse basketball coach, Yarke Stolman, as the best boys' basketball coach in South Carolina. Coach Stolman recently received the 2020 South Carolina Athletic Coaches Association Boys' Basketball Coach of the Year Award. For the past 28 years, the organization has selected one coach of the year per sport, regardless of the class. The award is based on the overall body of work, including the coach's success as well as the team's success. And Lindsay Riga took her love for science and passion for helping people and turned it into an award-winning teaching career. The South Carolina Academy of Science is recognizing her as its 2020 Teacher of the Year. And Ms. Riga, a science teacher at Spring Valley High School, discovered her passion for teaching while working as a camp counselor and attending... What says Clemson? Oh, it's hard to say that word. Clemson University, as an undergraduate student, I thought Liv just, Ms. Ruth just put that in there to mess with me. Three Richland Two classes, one Camp Discovery's American Educational Week Virtual Field Study Giveaway. Camp Discovery located in Blythewood, right here in Blythewood, South Carolina, has developed a collection of asynchronous instructional units to further enrich student learning. The camp is a longtime partner of the district, and we appreciate their continued support. McDonald's and other popular restaurant chains have boasted about their number of meals served. Well, Richland School District Two and Sedexo have a lot to boast about also. In the three days, November 13th, 20th, and 24th, we served a grand total of 53,766 meals at our six-mill distribution sites. Preparing and distributing this many meals made a huge difference in the lives of our students and their families, and I cannot thank our food service employees enough for doing your part to ensuring that all the children are well. And if you ever remember, there is free COVID testing still underway in the parking lot on the student side of R2I2, and DHEC will continue to, this service at least through December the 30th, Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the turnaround time is roughly 24 to 48 hours. I've had the privilege of taking a test there and getting my results back within 48 hours. Monday, December the 21st, and Tuesday, December the 22nd, will be e-learning days. This means all students will participate in e-learning through their school's current bell schedule. Winter break begins Wednesday, December the 23rd. Schools and offices will be closed during the break. Classes resume on January the 4th. Thank you all for allowing me the time to combine our awards that we normally do with special recognitions, along with some information to highlight and update the board, as well as to keep our community and our family informed of all the wonderful and positive things that are taking place in Richland School District Two each and every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You know, Dr. Davis, I just have to say this. Thank you so much for that. That is wonderful because during this timeframe, there's so much negativity out there, and to actually have all these positive things that Richland Two is doing and still accomplishing, that says something about your leadership, and it says something about the people who work here, the faculty, the staff, the bus drivers, the students. I am just elated to hear all of that. And unfortunately, bad news always gets the press. I'm gonna say that again, bad news always gets the press, but maybe we need to make sure that the press gets some of these highlights also, because I think our parents at this time need to know that Richland District Two is committed to being the place where your child is safe and is learning. And I just wanted to say that to you, Dr. Davis. Thank you. 8.2 capital.
Madam Vice Chair, I have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Agostini. Discussion, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, for your report. And I was really glad to hear that we have not, and I hope I say this correctly, so if I use the wrong terms, maybe Ms. Adams can correct me, but so I was glad to hear that we haven't had any confirmed cases for teachers or for classrooms where there's been close contact. Can you tell us how many confirmed cases we have in the district?
I can't, I can't say with any high degree of accuracy, but we can pull that out. Just as a reminder to our public, if you are seeking that information, you can find it on our district's webpage. It's on the very front of the landing page of the district's webpage, and it will give you our running tally of not only confirmed positive cases in the districts, but also the number of close contacts. From my last, I last checked that information on yesterday prior to leaving the office, and I saw and added up the number was, I think, 75 positive cases in our school district. But it is important for us to remember that that doesn't necessarily mean that that was contracted in the school district, in the building, but those are just 75 that we were made aware of.
Correct. And are those students that are, or people that are physically present in our schools, or do those include the e-learning people?
That, that's a great question, is both. Those that are at home in e-learning, those that may be in virtual, and those that are actually physically face-to-face.
Okay. And then also on that website, are those the numbers for who's in quarantine? How many have been quarantined?
I have not added up the numbers, individuals who are currently in quarantine. We do have that information on the website. I can provide you with that updated information. However, it would probably change from day to day, so it's a little difficult to keep track of that running numbers. That's why we wanted to make it available for anyone who wants to see it front and center on the district's webpage.
Do we change that, since you said it changes on a daily basis, then is somebody going into that website and changing it on a daily basis?
That's, that's, that's correct. We are changing it twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Moving on, capital improvements. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, we have coming before us this evening, Mr. Will Anderson, who is our chief for operations and logistics. Mr. Anderson is going to provide you with the status of the Richland Two bond projects December 2020. We typically provide you with, once a month, with an update regarding our bond projects. It has been a while, and so we want to give you some information on how we're doing, and to our public on how we're doing with the bond money that was entrusted to us for the builds of new schools and technology and safety as well as athletics. Mr. Anderson.
There we go. Thank you, Dr. Davis, and thank you, members of the board. It's good to be back in person with you all tonight. I actually had to wear pants, I guess, since I'm not behind my computer screen, so I'm glad to be here tonight to do this with you all. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, of course. Anyway, very happy to go for this. It was good to see you all last night at our last evening at the groundbreaking ceremony for E.L. Wright. I think Dr. Davis said it best, in this season that we're in, how thankful we are for our community and our partners to allow us to provide the premier facilities of our students and our staff. We take for granted sometimes, but we are very thankful for this opportunity and to give this opportunity to our community. So once again, thanks to our community, thanks for your support for making this happen. It's, we've been very busy during this, during this time, and we're looking forward to the fruits of that. So with that, I'll get into the report. You all have multiple reports in here, and I apologize if it's a lot, but we want to make sure you have everything you need, especially for our major projects, a more thorough report on all of our projects. And then this is just some highlights that the public can also find on our board, on our board agenda. Okay, there we go. Surprisingly, we are in about two years since the bond actually passed in November of 2018. We've completed 32 projects already. The majority of those are smaller projects, but we have completed 32. 14 are underway right now. We've got four new building projects underway, three major renovations, the two stadiums, and five security projects. So we have a lot of work currently going on. We also have five projects in the design phase, which includes the Performing Arts Center, for example. And we still have left, that we haven't done anything, assigned any architects or assigned any work for 23 more projects. I'll talk a little bit more about this in the timeline in a second. Summary of other projects, our camera and door access project is underway. We are currently completed two of the buildings and working through that now with making sure the state-of-the-art cameras are up to date in our process for that. Our IT projects have been going underway, you can see the list of those there, and they continue to make great process, progress on our IT projects. On this slide here, just wanted to give you an update of where we are in terms of our timeline and then our money, our money spent to date. You can see that the blue is the total number of projects, and then the red is of where we are as we go through the process. And right now, this year, we've, as I stated, we've completed 32 projects, and you can see hopefully by the year 2025, we will be done with all of the projects. We have looked at, actually, making sure we speed up a couple of projects. We've looked at 2026 as originally the end date, but due to the current bond market, the current job market, we would like to try to make sure we can, in our capacity, to get these projects done more quickly and show that commitment to our taxpayers that we're getting these done, these projects done in budget and on time. You can see to date, when I say to date, this is September 30th of our expenditures and our accumbrances and our remaining balance. So while we have completed 32 projects, a lot of those I mentioned small, and we have a lot of the major projects underway, so the next couple of years, especially in this 2021, 2022 school year, that number of expenditures will rise significantly as we're building three, three rebuilds. Another thing we're proud of and thankful to the board support as we went with the construction management risk, it allowed us for more flexibility to make sure we really hire small minority and women-owned businesses through our contractors. As you may remember, are currently on the books, our goal for our minority business report through our procurement office is 5% for capital projects. Right now, through our contracts we have on the books, so this is the contract either completed or we have on the books, we're at 20% of those contracts through dollars is committed to minority participation. So we're very excited to be able to do that, and you can see those dollars amount there. We continue to work hard with our construction management firms and other firms to make sure that we have small minority women-owned and local-owned businesses that keep our tax dollars here local in Richland Two. Just a few updates on some of our schools. Blythewood High School continues progress. You can see in these photos here, the wing, the fifth house, as well as the multipurpose addition and the athletic addition. So we're making a lot of good progress. It looks for this summer to be complete and moving in to the new facility in, for the fall of 2021. This is CFK North. It's a world of difference and one y'all went to a few months ago. Paints on the walls, playgrounds up, furniture is going to be moving in in a few weeks, so we hope to have those children out of the portables and into CFK North in, starting in January. So we're very excited, the progress we've made at CFK North, and we'll be, our teams will be working over Christmas at the end, over the holidays, to make sure we get the furniture all moved in, et cetera. Richland Northeast, the stadium is moving along great. This picture doesn't show it, but last Wednesday, I rode by, I usually ride by northeast on my way home, and there was no visitor bleachers, and on Thursday, the visitor bleachers were up, and so it's really starting to look like a stadium. You can see the fieldhouse on the, in the top-left picture, as well as that's coming along. So it's really now starting to look like a stadium, and you can just feel the excitement there about Richland Northeast. Ridgeview, the same way, they are, it's really coming along nicely. We're very excited, the progress with that very difficult site we're making, the weight room addition, the gym addition, as well as the stadium is coming along very well. These projects, both stadiums, will be done in the spring of 2021 with substantial completion by May of 2021. Artificial terrfs are done at our three stadiums. We're fortunate to host a South Carolina High School Football League Championship on Saturday, and we wouldn't have been able to do that in the past because of our field conditions, and the turf allowed us to do that, so we're happy for that, and the R&amp;E's turf will be put in once the stadium is done at R&amp;E. Bethel Hambury, the construction has started, these are some renderings. We look forward to the groundbreaking ceremony at Bethel Hambury on the 17th of December, so look forward to seeing you all there. Bethel Hambury, we just got the contract in, and we are about $4 million under budget for this contract, so we're very excited, having some good numbers come in there, so we're excited about getting this project really starting to come up the ground here soon. We talked about E.L. Wright and CFK, the groundbreaking yesterday, happy to have you all out there. Come here in January, we'll tear down the 700, 600 building and start continuing the process of building that school. The substantial completion for E.L. Wright will be 2022, and then CFK will be done in 2023. And you can see some of the renderings here from these photos. Forest Lake Elementary, we are finalizing the contract, the demolition has begun, is finished. We are just waiting on a permit to really get started. It's a land disturbance permit from the county. Once we have that in place, we will really start seeing some, a lot of construction. Fencing is up, contract work is in, you can see in the minority report, we have, that process is, that budget is also about $300,000 under budget, so it's right there, but we're still under, so we're excited about Forest Lake, and that groundbreaking will be in January. The renovations at Richland Northeast is underway, where you can see the concrete canopy system being torn down. If you've been by, you've seen them on the roof, replacing the roof and HVAC systems first, so that will be done in about a year's work of time. Ridgeview is the same way, it's well underway, that rendering is of the new auditorium and the plaza entering the auditorium there, so we're excited about that. They are on phase two of the HVAC renovation, they've gone through nine classrooms and on the next nine. Right now, we are moving well, and everything's going great at Ridgeview. We appreciate all these schools, and in particular Ridgeview and North, Rich Northeast with the amount of construction that's going on and keeping an active campus. To date, knock on a lot of wood, we have had no safety issues or no incidences, so we continue to focus on those safety meetings and those safety with our administration and with the contractors. Performing Arts Center, these are some renderings, very new renderings, if we continue the design process. As a reminder, this will be on site here, it will be in the adjacent, if you're facing the building to the left out in the parking, that vacant land facing R2I2. Those are some renderings of the exterior and the interior, very, these are still draft, we continue to work on those, we're excited to get that construction started in about, in the fall of 2021. And that was a lot of information, and of course, you can find all this information on our website, along with our subcontractors, timelines, money spent, and everything else. And again, just thank you to our community for allowing this to happen, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Board, are there, are there any questions? Just a comment, Ms. Mackey.
Just a comment, Madam Vice Chair, thank you. Just wanted to thank you for the updates, and I know that I check the website every now and then, and I'm glad that you put that up there, and I just usually do a search for bond when I'm going through the website, and there's a nice itemization and timeline from day one, per se, with regard to the bond, so I appreciate that information that you're sharing with us this evening, as well as the plethora of information that's on the website and as well as being available whenever we have questions to call you. Thank you so much for that. I know there are a lot of moving parts with regard to this, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and of course, the Communications Department does all the website, and of course, John Clayton and David Todd and Carla Bullard in our office, thanks to them for keeping us straight with this project.
It's very in-depth. Thank you so much.
Mr. Anderson, I just want to say thank you so much for all that your team is doing. That's a lot of work to do all, manage and look over all these sites, but I'd also like to touch on the fact that thank you for listening to the board when we had concerns about the minority and the women participation in sharing the wealth in these projects and making these people have local money be spent locally. That has been a big thing, and I'm glad that we are working so hard and diligently to do that. We appreciate you very much for overseeing that also. I wanted to say that because there have been questions about the public wondering what we were doing with that, but thank you, thank you, thank you for making that known and putting a chart up there. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to say, not only, of course, commend Mr. Anderson and the team in operations for doing that, but I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank the board. There was a very robust conversation when we were talking about, about what our goal was going to be, and 20% so far, and we still have a ways to go, we still have several years to go, but right now, we're doing well, and I think I want to commend the board for pushing the administration to set a high goal, because that was a challenge, to ensure that, that we had, that we provide the opportunities, not only to those who we have worked with in the past, and building those strong relationships that we've had, but also to seek new strong relationships that we've had, but also to seek new partners in, in, in helping them as well to make them a part of our family. So the board was very clear in, in its goals to, to push administration to really increase that number. I've had a conversation with Dr. Miley today and we're doing a little research to see what our previous projects turned out to be in the last bonds, to see how we're pacing and compared to that. But I just want to think, again, publicly thank the board for, for really setting a tone on that and really pushing administration to really move forward and, and making that possible, possible for us to do this so far. So we'll, we'll keep pace and keep track of that. Again, it's still early and so we're still in, I guess, the first quarter or so of this, of this project, but we will definitely keep pace and continue to update the board and the public on how we're doing in that area as well as all of the areas related to the bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Okay, eight point three. Oh, I'm sorry. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, eight point three, report legislative conference. Dr. Davis.
Miss Madam Vice Chair, I believe that report is going to be given by Dr. Caution Parker, is that correct? Yes, ma'am.
No, no.
Oh, it's on down. I don't want to scare anybody. The conference to me was, was very well orchestrated. I thought it without a hitch. It was very well attended. Of those of you that know Scott, he was going around with his feet, he was touching everybody on the shoulder. He was so happy to see people, live people, you know, right there when we were doing our delegation assembly. But again, we had everything we needed and everything went very well. The first part of this talks about some of the issues that were discussed, especially among a panel. And one thing that they discussed several things, but one thing they all agreed upon and they all wanted, they all expressed concerns, expressed concerns in giving teachers a step increase. But there's an uncertainty around whether or not it will happen for the current budget year or if it's going to be addressed in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So that, that's an issue. They went on through several other issues that they, everybody expressed their, their concerns about, but it all boils down to the pandemic. No matter what you say, no matter what we do, it all boils down to the pandemic. None of this has been through before, so no one's going to stand up here and criticize anybody about anything with the pandemic. We've never done it before. It's never happened before. So anyway, there were a lot of good, a lot of good instruction about that. Then Mike Shealy talked a little bit about the economy and its impact on the state budget and positive and modest growth in recurring general funds. Should a cushion be created to guard against mid-budget, mid-year budget cuts? And they said, yes, everything is so uncertain when it comes to the financing of everything. So we have to be very careful about that. And there were several questions that were asked, that was, was asked. One example being about teacher step increase. And the response to that was, if the state has nearly, nearly a billion dollars, why can't we fund teacher step increases? Well, the state is projected to have over a mil, a billion dollars in revenue. Based on the BEA latest forecasts, we will have one point one six nine billion dollars. However, of that total, only one hundred and eighty-two dollars is projected to be reoccurring. The rest of it is non-reoccurring revenue. Salaries are a reoccurring expense and most people will tell you that it should be funded with reoccurring dollars and we have heard Dr. Miley say that plenty of times. In fact, in my forty years in this district, I've heard every finance officer say that. And we have to be cognizant of the fact that future revenue shortfalls, shortfalls are also a possibility. So we've got to be careful about all of that. We can't, we just can't bet on that happening this year. Another thing, Adams versus McMaster. You recall the, the lawsuit that was filed against Governor McMaster about giving funds to private schools? And right now, the Governor, Governor McMaster's decision to allocate thirty-two million to private and religious schools was declared unconstitutional by the state, South Carolina State Supreme Court. The suit is under appeal, but the court is expected to rule very soon due to the December thirty-first expiration date for CARES Fund. And that's where this money will be coming from. So we have a deadline on that. We then moved into, it was closed out and we then moved into the delegation orientation where all the delegates were on Zoom. We were able to, to talk and, and ask questions, make sure we had a clear understanding as to what we were supposed to be doing the next day. We met in person on Friday at the conference center downtown and again, it was very well organized. We had everything we needed. I think most of us felt pretty, pretty comfortable. And I don't know how many of you, how many of you attended the conference this year? Okay. And so the two of we're able to see virtually just this, okay. That was, I thought that was really good so people could see and really went very well. One thing that Scott Price emphasized prior to focusing on the resolutions was that we do not speak for ourselves. We have to speak on behalf of the entire board, our board, as we, as we vote on these resolutions. And also you vote on the resolutions and not the rationale. I think what, what they did differently this year is that they decided to vote on the, they, they put it to us, will you vote, you want to vote on the resolutions en masse, you know, in one block? And, and that was, that was acceptable to a lot of people. So we voted, we voted for that. And then there were three, I think three resolutions that were pulled for further discussion. One was who pays for the training for our low achieving districts for professional development? And the state pays for that. Another one, and number five, I think the language was not very clear. It's about consolidation of districts and we had someone there who said that the district consolidation should be to include affected districts. And so we voted for that, that passed. And number twenty-seven, and that's the one you and I discussed. Number twenty-seven is the one on safety. If a car passes by a standing school bus, you know, usually it's the, the driver or the, the vehicle itself is identified and the driver, the vehicle at that point is charged or the vehicle is charged. And they're saying, well, what if someone else, this young lady said, well, what if someone else is driving the car? You know? And that's when Debbie L. Moore got up and explained that causes a lot more legalities and so it's always best to keep it as simple as possible. And they have it with the, with the vehicle. They divided the resolutions into three parts. This is the first time for that. You have the current resolutions. You have the resolutions that are new and we only had one that was submitted and that was from Beaufort County about broadband across, across the district. And so that's the only new one. Of course, it was voted upon and, and approved. And then we have the section of deletion and there are two resolutions that were in that, that area. That's number thirty-seven and number thirty-eight. Number thirty-seven, I can't remember which one that was. It's occurring now, it's in the process, it's happening now. So we didn't need, we didn't need to put that in with the regular resolutions. And number thirty-eight, they proposed for a deletion. Charter schools and Title I funding. And that also is in progress now. So we voted to delete those two. And that was about it. Then we moved on into naming the new president, Cheryl Burgess is going to be the new president. Chuck Sayers is on his way out and he, he's, he's done a great job and he was very emotional about it and in welcoming Cheryl. And then we also moved to the swearing in of the new president for, for SCASA. I'm sorry, I keep saying SCASA. School Board Association. Again, that's Cheryl. And then our slate of officers and directors and the vote was unanimous for each candidate, including our very own Amelia Mackey. So congratulations, Ms. Mackey. And that was it. We weren't in there maybe two hours.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Are there, is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Parker?
Comment, Madam Vice Chair?
Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. That was a thorough report. I just wanted to let people know if anyone wants to, to see any of the items or resolutions that Dr. Caution Parker mentioned, you just go to the South Carolina School Board Association site, which is S C S C B A dot org dot com, just to see, and everything is there. The actual manual that we went through, the delegate assembly handbook, all of that is available online. So anything that you need to see is there.
And, and I did check to see when they were going to have viewing of the, the entire conference and they're not sure when it's going to be on, but they are going to post it.
One thing, Dr. Caution Parker, that I had was, I think you made a very valid point. When they came up with the, the difference between perhaps offering a bonus as opposed to salary increase, I think that it's important for people to understand what I think they're saying and you can correct me if I'm wrong. What they're saying is, is that because a step increase has to be on a budget that, that continues forever and ever and ever, once it's implemented and a, and a bonus is a one-time gift. And because of the uncertainty of next year's budget and perhaps FOIAs and staff cuts, it would be more advantageous to do a bonus as opposed to a step. Is that what they're pretty much saying, correct?
Right, absolutely. And, and if I recall correctly, didn't we do that in February or March this year?
Yeah.
We did that, I think before the, the pandemic, we did that and other districts are discussing that as well, as opposed giving the step increase, especially if there's nothing solid about the financing that we're going to be facing.
I know that that's a very big issue and I think it's very important that there's a little clarity as to why most districts are having some hesitation about that. It's not that, we all agree, everybody needs more money, you know? But we all have to make sure that the funds are going to be there because of the things that have closed and the budget may not be the same for next year, not this year, but for the next year. And then thank you for doing that, Dr. Caution Parker. Appreciate you.
I did get your name tag, so I've got it to give to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions for Dr. Caution Parker before we move on? Okay. Seeing none, let's move on to nine point one, suspension of policy IKAA tests and examinations. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and to our board. And I know our view in public may have some difficulty seeing the policy that may be on the screen since you're viewing via, I guess, the internet. But if you recall, our state superintendent, and I'm going to ask Dr. James Anne Shealy, who's our assistant superintendent for academics, if she would go ahead and come to the podium just in case I miss something or there's some questions that I'm, I'm not going to be, I may not be able to answer. But if you recall, our state superintendent has given, had been given an authority to waive end of course testing or waive the twenty percent mandated requirement for EOC testing. We have a policy that also requires that our EOC testing be as mandatory, that it counts twenty percent for the student final grade and the student's final grade. What we're asking from the board tonight is a motion and the approval to suspend this policy temporarily for this semester and next semester so that the twenty percent is not a mandatory, a mandatory requirement. Our goal would be to allow that. Now, I want to be clear that we're not asking for a waiver of taking an EOC. You still have to take the EOC test. What we're asking for is that when a student takes the EOC or when a student completes the EOC exam, that it does, it's not mandatory that it counts twenty percent. What we're suggesting is that if it helps the student's grade, it will count twenty percent. If it does not help the student grade, then we would not make it mandatory that it counts twenty percent. We believe this will give the students motivation to do their very best on the test. But for some reason, because they may be virtual or they may be dealing with issues as it relates to the pandemic and they do not do their very best, this doesn't hurt them. And so we're asking for the board to give, to, to, to a motion to temporarily suspend the mandatory twenty percent or temporarily suspend policy IKAA, which then will allow us to have the flexibility to give the student twenty percent if it helps them and then the flexibility not to count it twenty percent if it does not.
Madam Vice Chair?
Um, yes, Dr. Elkins.
I would like to make a motion to suspend policy IKAA tests and examination temporarily.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion?
Madam Vice Chair?
Ms. Mackey?
Just wanted to say that to the staff and, and the people who, the, the minds, the one behind this concept, I very much appreciate that consideration and that, that, that measure of compassion to students who may be going through whatever, you know, various scenarios at home, trying to keep up such a rigorous testing, testing course as well. So just, I appreciate the thought that went into that.
I'm sure, I'm sure the parents appreciate that also, you know, because there was a lot of anxiety about testing. So I'm sure they appreciate. Mr. Manning, are you trying to say something?
I, I am. I'd like to make a, 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 instead of temporarily, you could spend the policy for the twenty, twenty-one school year.
Okay, Mr. Manning has asked for an amendment to the motion. Dr. Elkins, are you amenable to the amendment to the motion?
Well, I made a secondary.
Sorry, secondary.
I'll second the motion.
Can I ask clarification since we have a second?
Yes, Ms. Agostini, you want clarification as well?
Yeah, what was that? What was that?
Well, Dr. Davis wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not quite sure that we would have the authority to suspend the policy if the state requires it to be mandatory in the twenty, twenty, in the twenty-one, twenty-two academic school year. So we are already suspending it now for twenty twenty-one, which would mean this December and then in, in the, in May when they take it for second semester. But to go beyond that, I don't know if we have the ability to do that because the state has not, the state superintendent has not waived it beyond this year, this academic year.
Okay, and let me ask, maybe I misunderstood what Mr. Manning's motion was when I seconded. And I, I seconded it for the discussion, but did he say for the end of the twenty twenty year, twenty-one year?
I, I didn't hear everything he said, no, I can't hear.
Basically, he said because it has not been approved by Miley's firm for the next year, that we may not have the authority to do your motion.
Well, my message was for the twenty twenty-one school year to come.
Yes, that's what I heard, for the whole, this year. So to put a defined date on it for the end of the twenty twenty-one school year.
I can't hear everything.
I, I think we're asking for the same thing. I think the motion that, that Dr. Elkins Johnson made and the motion that Mr. Manning's making is the same motion, which is to temporarily suspend the policy for the remainder of this school year.
Right, and I guess, I, I heard what he said, yeah. I just feel like putting a timeline on it, instead of just temporarily, to me temporarily from a policy standpoint is open-ended versus defining the time period to the end of the twenty twenty-one.
So would it be an amendment to the, it would be asked that the wording of her motion be changed to be more specific to the end of, for, for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one academic school year?
Correct.
Yes. But it's the same motion.
So that we define the time period and if we needed to come back and we suspend that policy next year because we're still in some sort of situation like this, that fine, but instead of temporarily, the reason for my motion was to put a timeframe for the rest of the year.
So I concur with Mr. Manning.
Well, Ms., Dr. Elkins, would it be, would it be amenable for Dr. Elkins, Dr. Elkins to simply to restate the motion as a, a, asking, administration's asking for a motion from the board to suspend the EOC, the EOC, to suspend policy IKAA for the remainder of the twen, for the twenty twenty-one academic school year?
So I, I'm sorry.
You don't need to second it. All, all she needs to do is reword it if Ms. El, if Dr. Elkins is amenable to doing that.
No, we need to vote on the secondary amendment and then we'll vote, where's our parliamentarian? We'll vote on the second amendment.
Mr. Manning, did you withdraw your secondary motion? If we reword it?
I would draw my secondary motion if you do.
He's withdrawing it, Ms. Agostini.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Dr. Elkins, are you amenable to the changes?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll.
Yes, the academic school year does include the summer.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to suspend policy IKAA tests and examinations for the school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Just one second, Dr. Elkins. Yes, Ms. McFadden?
Okay, so as I'm understanding that this is going to help the students in the long run, it's not going to hurt them with the twenty percent at the end of school, end of course testing. So currently, students are having grades that they're getting on their report card. So if a student right now is having difficulty in a course and they're not card. So if a student right now is having difficulty in a course and they're not participating well, or they're struggling in some way and they have a bad grade currently and they're prohibited from participating in sports and other activities because of that grade, is this the type of policy that would help with that?
This policy would only be specific to, to end of course exam. So this policy was, is, this will be a, a policy that you would see, uh, as a common policy in every, pretty much every school district. We're required to have a policy by state law to support the 20, the mandatory 20% for, for the EOC. So this only would relate to if you are entering to the final exam of your, uh, of your course, EOC is required to be 20% of the final grade. Other courses may, their final exam may all, may be 15% or it may be 25%. We don't have a policy that mandates, um, a, a final exam having a certain percent. The only one that is mandated, uh, that's consistent is the end of course exam.
Okay. So my question is currently, if there's a student who is not passing a course in a class, they are not able to participate in certain activities because of that grade of e-learning, is there a policy somewhere, and I took time to look and I couldn't find one, is there something that can be done to help those students? As if we're, if we're saying that the end of course for these students, we can help them out at the end of their course, is there something for students now to help them out?
There's nothing, to my knowledge, where we have a policy in place that to help them out, other than that student working with his or her individual teacher to make any type of accommodations for any miswork, uh, any makeup work, a retest, retest, um, if they didn't do well on a certain test. Those types of things are in place to allow that students to recruit or recover. Students are also given an opportunity, if they don't fail, if they don't pass a class, they either do credit recovery or content recovery and so that they can, so they can gain the credit for that particular course. But there's nothing specifically that identifies a course. This policy would only apply to certain classes. That would be Algebra I, English I, Biology and US History. So any course outside of that, this policy wouldn't, this would not, it wouldn't pertain to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Doctor, yeah, we, I, I don't go back to that. Yeah. Dr. Elkins, we need a second to Dr. Elkins' motion.
Second.
Ms. Agostini seconded. Any other further discussion? If not, we will take the vote.
Madam Vice Chair, my pol, uh, my motion is not reading correctly on my computer.
Okay.
And it's not correct. It needs to be corrected up there. Does it not?
Yes, it does.
Could you?
Can you refresh it?
Read it to us, Lee.
Yeah. Cause I think, I see what Ms. Agostini's saying. It looks like it's the old motion showing.
Thank you.
Ms. Agostini, they.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take the vote.
I, I voted in the affirmative. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. We are on 10.1 draft agenda items for the January 12, 2021 meeting. Dr. Davis.
Just to point out before I cover the draft agenda items, just wanted to remind the board and the public as well, we do have a special call board meeting. Um, I think it's next week, next Tuesday. And that special call board meeting, we'll be discussing, um, inequities in the school district. So, uh, and issues of inequity and that will be, uh, led by, uh, Dr. Helen Grant, um, along with myself and other members of our executive team and leadership team. So just wanted to remind everyone about that and we will of course send the information out to remind the board. For the January 12th, uh, board meeting, it was our regular scheduled board meeting. We will have our call to order and in our executive session items that we have drafted will be student appeals and student admission requests until the district's adult ed. If that information should change, we'll let the board know. Inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance will be, uh, at number 3.1. We'll ask for the approval of this agenda as well as approval of the consent agenda, which will be followed by our public, our first public participation and then followed by our voting on executive session items. Those executive session items would be student appeals and student admission to the district's adult education program. Request for the adult education program at 8.1. New business, no action requested. We'll have the superintendent's highlights. An agenda item, uh, for the next meeting. We'll present the draft agenda for January the 26th. We'll follow that with approval. Ask for the approval of that draft agenda, followed by public participation, board superintendent comments, uh, executive session two if needed. Our executive are voting on executive session, voting on executive session two items if needed and then adjournment.
Okay. 11.1 approval of draft agenda items for the January 12, 2021 meeting. Do we have a, um, motion for approval?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the January 12, 2021 regular board meeting of the Richland School Board of Trustees.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. We have one no, six yes, one no. Motion passes. 12.1 public participation too. We have no need for that. So we'll move on to 13.1 board and superintendent comments. We will start with Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. I just want to congratulate, um, all of the people, um, the employees that, uh, Dr. Davis recognized tonight. That's really outstanding, all the, uh, accolades that, um, our employees receive. And then I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Um, Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker.
Um, first I'd just like to say thank you, uh, Dr. Davis for your highlights. I like that idea. I like that format. I think it does a lot for us and for morale here in Richland School District too. And, um, again, you know, we're just going through this, this time of the pandemic. Nobody knows exactly what to do. And all we can do is be flexible because it changes every day. So we just need to be safe, as safe as possible and move forward. And, um, where's Will? I'd like to thank Will for your report. I appreciate that very much. And I hope everyone enjoys a safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Dr. Monica Elkins.
Just like to say thank you to all who presented this evening. Dr. Davis, thank you so much for the highlights. I, I really enjoyed that. And I like the fact that it's coming at the beginning of the meeting. Therefore, no one is drifting off at the end of the meeting. So they get to see the wonderful and exciting things that we're doing here in the district. And of course, just want to let everybody know, we know this year has totally been different to what we've been accustomed to. Continue to hang in there. We're halfway through. You're doing an awesome job. Thank you for everything that you've done. Continue to be safe, wear your mask and have a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year. See you in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Ms. McFadden. Cut your mic on, Ms. McFadden.
There we go. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity, being as how it's my first time to do this, to say thank you to the community for voting for me to be in this seat. I pray that I represent you well and that I do my best. Um, if I can help and assist in any way, please feel free to contact me. Um, my information is on the website. Um, so I just want to say thank you to everybody and thank you for all these people up here that have been helping me so much during these past couple of weeks. Um, it has been, um, extraordinary. I've learned a lot and there's a lot more to learn. And so I just want to say thank you to you guys and, um, Dr. Baron Davis. And so to the staff out here that I see and that I've been meeting, I thank you all for, um, everything that you're doing and for introducing yourselves to me. I'd take the time to get to know you guys if I can since COVID is over with. But I'd like to say hi and thank you for answering any questions that I might have. Um, so I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll see you guys in January.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. You, you heard you say after COVID, she want to get to know y'all. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, just for the people who are here, who have to be, thank you for being here. For those who choose, um, to watch the meetings and, and take it not robbery of their time to be here. We appreciate your being here and hope that you're getting the information that you're looking for. For those who are watching online, stay safe. Um, one of the things that Chuck Saylor, the outgoing, um, president of the South Carolina School Board Association said during the delegate assembly on Friday, um, was how heavy his heart, and I, I echo, I felt his, um, his heart, was how heavy, um, his heart is for the things that we're going through with regard to quarantine or the, um, he took it personally, some of the comments that, you know, he's been, that, that he's gotten and threats and things of that nature. Um, this is serious. We can't, I can't, um, compare what I do with what a teacher does, an administrator does, um, the superintendent executive staff. Um, you are the frontline workers in school. But for the leaders who have heavy hearts to, please know, I, I, I'm speaking for me, that, um, you're in our prayers. I appreciate what you're doing for those people who are affected with COVID, not just in our school system, but in our community, in our country. I'm praying for those people, praying, um, for those who, um, had one, you know, you know, seat short or more at Thanksgiving, you know, and may do that at Christmas too. But just praying for those families and, um, just trying to, uh, keep the focus on what the focus is. Yes, we want to educate our children, but the pandemic is very real. It's like nothing this country has ever seen before. So I'm just very thankful for the people who are prioritizing that and keeping, um, trying to keep people safe and trying to find a way to educate our students and keep staff and all safe. And it's, it's a, it's a daunting task, but for everyone who is working to do that, even if they're just giving the community sending a prayer or some sort of support, I appreciate that. It is not taken lightly. And you all, I, I pray that you're all safe and know that you are all appreciated. Have a good holiday. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Okay. I would just like to say that, um, I want to take a moment to just say a special thank you to the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the janitors, and the people who, you know, a lot of times we know that teachers need the kudos because they're in the front line, but these people are in the front line also. And they, and they have gotten COVID and sick and everything else along with the teachers. And it, we're just in a pandemic, but sometimes they don't get the recognition for exactly how hard they are working. And one thing that comes to mind is when we talk about this testing that we're trying to maybe introduce to the schools, we have to start really thinking about those people who you're asking to do the testing because that's an additional, an additional risk for them. That's an additional risk because if I'm correct, I think I heard that one of the things that has to be done if you decide to do the site, and Dr. Davis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I want, I don't want to give misinformation. But one of the thing that I've heard is, is that after each person has potentially been tested, the whole room where they're tested has to be sanitized again before another person can come in and be tested. It's not like a hospital facility and it's not like a tent facility. And so who is going to do that? We're asking either our nurses to do that, which is another additional thing, or are we asking our custodial staff to do that, which is another additional task? And generally in the school, we don't have a whole slew of custodial staff in schools. So I just thought, I was sitting here thinking, and I'm in a, I'm in, y'all know that I'm in education. I say that. I, I've been in school since August. I have been in school since August. And yes, I am scared. And yes, I worry for my own health too. So I, I know exactly how you feel. And I watch our custodial staff and I watch those cafeteria workers and I watch those bus drivers. And I say, you know, no one is saying really an exceptional thank you to them. And so no, that's not sliding anybody else because I know what you're doing because I'm doing it too every day. But I just wanted to make sure that we took just a moment to really say thank you to those people who sometime are kind of left in the background. So I, I felt the need to say that. And was I correct with that, Dr. Davis?
It's, uh, it is, if they test positive, there's a positive test during the, um, testing of that. And the recommendation would be that we actually do testing outside because of that. So we'd have to have, find outside locations, which I.
Right. Which is another, which is another expense and another factor. There's a lot that goes with that, but that's not for tonight. But I just wanted to make sure that we thank those people. Also, I would like to thank everybody on this board. You all worked tirelessly to make sure that the people in this district know that we are concerned, we care, we love them. This is, these are hard decisions. They really are. They are. But it, so don't ever think that there's not a board member up here that I know of that takes it lightly. There's not one that I know of. I think we all take it seriously. And having said it on a lighter note, I just want to say to everybody, please have a very happy holiday. Stay safe. That means y'all can go to each other's house and have a party. Mm-hmm. I see you over there, um, Dr. Franklin. I see you. Stay safe. Enjoy your holiday and remember that we are all in this together. We can't do it separately and we can't do it against each other. We have to be a functioning body and a unit to get through this. Otherwise, to have dissension only brings chaos. And that's not what we need in a time of a pandemic. Thank you. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, I just want to just, again, I, 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 I want you all to hold me accountable to this. Uh, we have talked about this extensively at the district office, this, this power of, of positive thinking, this power of positive affirmation, this power of putting positive things into the atmosphere. So this power of appreciative inquiry, you will, will get tired of that term from me because I will be using it, uh, quite a bit. So in the spirit of appreciative inquiry, I, I want to say, um, I want to say thank you to our staff and to the district, the district office staff for all the hard work that you do, uh, for putting together these board meetings each and every, uh, second and fourth Tuesday. You do a phenomenal job and we appreciate your attention to detail and ensuring that these things go off, um, as smoothly as they do. Again, I want to echo the sentiments of our board and thank Mr. Anderson for his presentation, uh, on the bond referendum and updating us on that, uh, on the status of our bond. I want to think, uh, I want to also give thanks to our employees, um, for their selfless service, um, particularly, uh, all of our employees, but particularly our teachers for the selfless services that they are, um, uh, doing each and every day by coming to work and going into classrooms, uh, and, 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 and teaching our students the hard things that they're doing, such as dual modality and making sure the students are wearing their mask. I had a chance to visit several schools today. Our teachers are engaged. They are passionate and they are working hard. And so I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do. But I don't want to forget, um, those sometimes unseen, um, heroes that are working behind the scenes as well, that support staff. That, that includes our, our classified staff, our volunteers and our subs, um, who come into our buildings and help us do the work that we need to do to ensure that we're educating our students to our very best ability. And, um, I also want to thank the board, uh, for your support, um, uh, for the support of our employees and your support of, of, of our district. Um, we are doing a phenomenal job and we can't do that without your support at all. I thank the board for allowing us, uh, giving us the opportunity to suspend policy IKAA. I think this is going to help our students and help our parents with some, with some relief as it relates to, to testing. And so I want to thank you all for, for, for that as well. Um, and again, I want to thank the board for your commitment to, um, provide a premier, uh, working environments, experiences for our employees. We can't go without saying, there are some, there are some industries and there are some employees who have laid people off during the holiday season. Um, and you have been committed to allowing this administration to continue to support our, all of our employees by, by ensuring that everyone is paid on the 15th and the 30th. I know that, I know that didn't sound like anything, but that's a lot. I know that, I know that doesn't sound like anything, but that's a lot because, uh, you know, just from the media and the news that we read, you know, there are some people who are really trying to figure out what they're going to be doing here at Christmas and after Christmas and whether or not they're going to get a stimulus. And we can't take for granted that we work in an industry and we work in a district that has been committed to, um, ensuring that, what does that mean? Well, that means that not only that they are, that all of our employees are, are working, that includes our bus drivers and our aides in the caf, our aides in the library, media centers and, and guidance offices and throughout this district. Those individuals also have healthcare. And no one's lost their healthcare in Richland School District Two during a global pandemic. And this board should be commended for that type of leadership and that type of guidance and allowing this administration to do that because everyone can't say that. And so we need to be grateful and have some gratitude for those types of small things like that that mean so much to our community because I could only imagine how afraid I would be if I did not have healthcare, uh, during this time. So thank you all for the heart, for that. And, and again, happy holidays. We wish you all the best. Wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands, and stay safe, and we love you.
I'm sorry, I, I, oh, minute, Mr. Manning, I forgot you were on the speaker. Mr. Manning, did you want to say something? I should have, I should have known you had something to say, Mr. Manning. Hang on, let me put the mic on you. Go ahead.
I, I, I do, Dr. Davis, I do appreciate the, uh, comments that you made, um, the, the data. It's important to know that we haven't had any staff, um, that we're aware of who are infected with COVID from their work in the district. And we certainly do, um, as a board value the, the health and safety. And I, I think we've gone to great lengths to try to protect our staff in the district. But, you know, I measure that and the fact that we are in person. Again, the data that you shared with us and the progress we've made in the, um, graduation rates. And all of us who are in education know that the, particularly the elementary years, um, where we have students back, um, back to school, uh, more days than we do in middle and high, how pertinent that is really to that end date of graduation. And they need that face-to-face time with teachers. So I, um, certainly a balancing act that we have to, to weigh and measure, um, the benefit all back to both sides of that equation. Um, but I, I do appreciate the information that you shared with us, um, on, uh, on COVID. Um, also just briefly wanted to, um, there, there was a, a media article that was posted, and I think it, it made some comments, um, about some actions that were taken at the last meeting in regards to, um, was Robert Rules of Order followed when it came to nominations? And, um, I've done a little bit of research and we didn't, in fact, follow Robert Rules of Order. Um, that where there is no second required, um, there's no debates or nominations. And in fact, um, for 2018, 19, and 20, there has been no discussion or debate after nominations of any officers or, or other nominations. So that's in line with how we've conducted business in the past. Um, and I also want to comment that, uh, we were under short notice for the nomination. Um, Ms. Mackey, congratulations for your final, uh, vote into that position. But we were under a, a timeline in which I didn't have the meetings available to get the vote. But I did receive the majority board support through individual phone calls and knew I had supported the majority of the board. So that was something that I just randomly did on my own, um, as board chair, to write that letter to the, the school board association. So I just wanted to set the record straight about some of those comments that were made in the public. Otherwise, happy holiday, happy Christmas. I hope everybody's safe and, uh, sorry I'm not there with y'all in person.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Get well. At this time, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second? Oh, everybody want to second that, huh? Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker seconded. Any discussion? Hand vote. Motion carries in affirmative. Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.